Well, here we are, folks. Final video in this series from coverage of the Chamber of Commerce candidate forum. I'm Kevin, the editor, bringing you this last session with the District Three County Commission candidates, including incumbent Ray Carter, Butch Garrett, and John Pascal. The trio appeared at both forums, and you can find the previous video coverage like this free of charge on PolkToday.com. We'll jump right into this final part, which is just a little over thirty minutes in length, so feel free to pause any time to take a quick break. I won't blame you if you do.
We should say thanks to all of you for attending tonight. Also, we appreciate your interest in the future of Polk County. We'll do that, and that way, all of you have your individual mics, and we won't have to pass them back and forth. All right, please allow me to introduce and welcome our county commission candidates for District Three. The candidates include incumbent Ray Slugger Carter, John Pascal, and Butch Garrett. Thank you all for participating tonight. And again, we'll be asking these questions and allowing you to answer in alphabetical order, and each candidate will have an opportunity to answer the questions first. Our first question will be first for Ray Carter. Mr. Carter, what inspired you to run for county commissioner, and what experience and skills do you possess that make you qualified to serve?
Thank you, Dan, and thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. To say that I love my community's rural traditions and greatness of family would be an understatement. My desire is to see all Polk County citizens have an opportunity to enjoy life here as much as I have, to work, raise your family, and let your kids raise their family. I'm a proud Cedar Town High School graduate. I moved to Rockmark in 1992. I obtained an associate degree in criminal justice and bachelor's degree in organizational management. I've been employed with IBM for over twenty-four years, performing various leadership roles in data management, business analysis, and organizational management for multiple Fortune 500 companies. My other prior experience includes eighteen years providing management and IT consulting for VP AMCO and the Department of Energy Nuclear Defense Programs. And I also started my career with six years with the Polk County Police Department. I've had the honor and privilege of serving as a Polk County Commissioner for the last six years. I also served nine years as CEO of Rockmark Councilman and three years on the Development Authority of Polk County. I believe that along with my fellow commissioners and excellent staff, we have affected numerous changes and improvements in our county operations. I thoroughly enjoyed my service and the many actions that have made our area a better place to live, work, and play, and I look forward to continuing those results as your elected Polk County Commissioner. Thank you.
Mr. Garrett, next.
This is my friend. Well, to start, I'd like to say that I'm just a common man, working for a common good. I've never been in government whatsoever, but I do feel that there is a need for someone like me at this time. Our government today is in not a very good place. My sole purpose for this endeavor is to give the people of this county a voice, not just a select few. Some of my attributes are my honesty, my integrity, and I'm actually a great problem solver. I've actually never had a task given to me at any position I've ever had that I couldn't solve it. Some of my accomplishments were at Tentico Automotive. As four different jobs, I increased production by a hundred percent. At Lockheed, the last panel I built, my inspector told me it was the best he'd ever seen in thirty years of inspection. And as a roofer, my first standing seam job, I was told it was better than people who've installed them for twenty years. So I always strive for excellence in anything I do, and I plan on doing that for the people of Polk County.
Mr. Pascal.
Born and raised here in Polk County and lived here my entire life. Good Lord willing, Saturday will be my fifty-second year here. Married for twenty-five years, two kids, ten Victor Baptist Church, and I'm a small business owner within the community, been in business for thirty-six years. Over my fifty-two years of living here, I was involved in fire service for twenty-eight years. I started out as a volunteer here in Rockmark, then became a paid or career farmer, served here for ten years, and then moved on, done my last eighteen years with the City of Cargetville. All that being said, in the years that I've worked through the fire service aisle, both the fire departments, I've worked myself through the ranks to become a company officer as a direct leader. That being said, I've led many men and women that I've worked with in work details, also in every aspect of the job, I was always in the public eye. These accomplishments also allowed me to expand to a state level to teach students from across the state to ensure not only their personal safety, but the well-being of the communities in which they serve. While in my tenure with both fire departments, I've had the opportunity to help development and set forth budgets, also to implement safety aspects and programs. As a volunteer within the community, I've also served on the Rockmark Little League Board, not only as a coach, but as a board member for nine years, and also have done various other things, as well as serving with the Special Olympics and church programs. Working in the public safety has always been in direct contact with the citizens of the community, and I feel that I would be an asset to the county to help with budgets, provisions for the county, and believe in what I do. Been told that I have a service heart. With that being said, I'm always willing to help, perform duties for others, and most of all, be devoted to the community in which I live.
Mr. Garrett, you'll answer this question first. How do you plan to address the most pressing issues facing our county, such as infrastructure, economic development, and public service?
All right, in order to find out what the current infrastructure problems are, I would meet with the county manager and the department heads and their supervisors to find out what the critical needs of the county are. In these meetings, I will help me get a complete view of what is happening within the county from the perspective of each departmental service. After speaking with those listed above, I will know what the most pressing issues are, I would then know where to begin prioritizing the claim of action. After current infrastructure needs, all current infrastructure needs need to be brought up at the proper standards first.
Mr. Pascal.
Addressing the three issues of the question, first being the infrastructure. As a state of Tuesday night, I've made the point to try and visit various departments within the county, spend a time with the department or departmental managers or leaders, and there is infrastructure within the county that does need improvement. I do understand and know that it comes at a cost to the taxpayers, but there are some things within the county that is overdue, one being the courthouse and two being the jail. When it comes to the economic development, bringing in the industry to help provide more jobs, to help improve the well-being of our citizens, this in return may not happen fast, but allows for the goals to be set forward for not only the county, but the cities as well, to prosper and expand the county. Comes to public services, I firmly believe that we should expand the services that we offer to citizens that is already in place, and as the other board or the other candidates has already said, the main example that's been used has been the fire service. It is a benchmark for the county that we have now paid personnel, but we're still very short of that. That department needs to grow exponentially so that our ISO rating will go down, and in return, as a citizen, we get the needed break on our insurance policy.
Mr. Carter.
Well, it's unfortunate, I've only got two minutes to discuss this topic, or else I could spend a couple hours talking about what's already being done. I believe this assesses local government's sound and quality of life and citizens it serves. That means we must build and develop the infrastructure required to support the community's goals, efficiently and effectively deliver the services that support that infrastructure and the needs of all citizens. We have to ensure we invest and support the viable economic development pathways, critically provide a balanced life, live, work, play environment for our workers. We have to address these needs in totality, being careful not to let one decision not consider the impact across the board. It's not a simple task, rather, it requires much research, constantly broadening our understanding of all government rules, regulations, and laws, and perhaps more importantly, understanding the community's expectations, goals, and direction. More specifically, we must actively engage with Polk County Water and already developed further capacity and delivery expansion along development corridors. That must include some level of future wastewater treatment, which is primarily constrained to residential and lot building size in the county, as well as commercial development. Acknowledging that cities are our economic hubs, we must coordinate closely with them to assist in the commercial industrial development zones, harmonizing our regulations and investing in growth potential. We must recognize that these investments are best focused and understand that the derived benefits are across the entire county, not just the affected location. From a county perspective, our major financial focus in this area must be expanding and improving our travel quarters. Your commission and county management team have placed a great focus on overall service enhancements. We successfully brought actions against a landfill contractor. We continue to focus efforts within public safety, broadening our drug enforcement capabilities, implementing the true emergency management capabilities, setting up Polk County's first professional fire service personnel to complement our great volunteer professionals, and we work closely with our judges, DA, and all other court officials to properly update our court operations, both physically and functionally. All of this while we have aggressively managed your tax dollars and consistently reduced tax rates, a total of almost three meals in the last six years, down to eight point five meals. Challenges remain, but we have a cohesive group of commissioners and staff knows how to identify and tackle these challenges. Thank you.
Mr. Pascal, you'll answer this question first. How do you plan to foster collaboration and communication between the county, cities, citizens, and community organizations?
Intergovernmental communications is, I believe, to be vital, and it's needed to be discussed, not only through the cities, but well as with the county of everyone, sit down at the table to talk and know what is going on within the county, or what has been approached, whether it's by the city or our county. In return, the hope would be to expand the county and be able to give back to the citizens to the best of our ability.
Mr. Carter.
The intergovernmental committee has been reactivated over the last year. Meetings are coordinated and chaired by Polk County Development Authority. As a member of that committee, I look forward to being much more active and ensuring our communications go across the board. Collaboration and communication between the county and the cities is a very critical element of overall local government. It takes recognition of a few trips, though. All city residents or county residents must be afforded the same level of county services. The cities are our economic hubs. We must work intimately with them to appropriately develop the growth opportunities that best serve all of Polk County. We all benefit when our cities benefit. We should all be trusted and equal partners in our endeavors, willing to share in the efforts, costs, and burdens that come our way. The ever-increasing cost of government operations will one day drive us to consider further consolidation of services, whether that be code enforcement and building inspection, fire, police protection, or even recreation. We all should be positioning ourselves in that direction, provide more cost efficiency for our future generations. Most importantly, none of us can wear our feelings on our shoulders. We must be candid, open, and honest in all dealings, and we must ensure our managers, department heads, are set for sharing constant communication with their peers at the city and county level, and those managers communicate needs up and down the organization. Squash the rumors, acknowledge the facts is my motto. Thank you very much.
Mr. Garrett.
Plan to be active on the intergovernmental committees, increase public awareness through our local outlets such as print, internet, and radio, and utilize the county website, emails, and texts. Need to approach the community leaders and discuss the importance of making this a joint effort and find out how it can help the leaders of the civic, school, and religious organizations to get the people involved.
Mr. Carter, you'll answer this question first. What is your vision for the future development of the county and ensuring it remains a beautiful place of work and live, and specifically, how would you address blighted or neglected properties?
Well, as I've already mentioned, my desire is to see that all Polk County citizens have an opportunity to enjoy life here as much as I have, to prosper, work, raise your family, and let your children raise their family. We are and will likely always be a rural community. Unmanaged and uncontrolled growth is visible all around us. My goal since the early days when Rockmark City Council was to avoid the negative aspects of urban sprawl. We can accomplish that through building and zoning regulations, planned development activities, and coordinating with interested developers to ensure our visions are maintained while building theirs. I believe Rockmark has been successful in this regard, and hope the county can follow in that same light. We must recognize we're large, wide residential fits, same for higher-density properties. We should identify the characteristics we desire and embed those in our building codes. We also have to respect the individuality of landowners and their right to pursue their own character, but ensuring that doing so does not create public or health risks outside their boundaries. Addressing blighted and neglected properties at county level is much different than the city level. Higher-density areas such as subdivisions can be actively managed with effective HOAs and property covenances. However, many of our rural properties have or have been used for agricultural activities. It's very difficult and highly subjective to properly and legally define these properties for the courts. We have and will continue to work with property owners to address these situations and seek resolutions that can benefit all. Thank you.
Mr. Garrett.
Well, this question in particular concerns me because it sounds like more control. I actually think our government, our county government, puts too much control on its citizens, too many restrictions. The fact that you have to have a minimum of a twelve-hundred-square-foot home is just out of reach for our younger citizens. I think we need to look at that and lower that square footage. So, you know, the tiny homes, they're not allowed here. I don't really know why. I mean, honestly, I don't know why. There's nothing wrong with them. I understand we have to have regulations. We don't want to hurt our neighbor's property value, but I think if somebody works, makes money, buys a piece of property, they should be told every little thing they can and can't do. So I plan on working toward rectifying that problem if I were to get this position. And as far as the blighted and neglected properties, there's a process in place. I say we just leave it as is. Thank you.
Mr. Pascal.
Feel that the goal should not only be county-wide, but the city involved too, as has already been said. There's code enforcement that is in place by city and county vote, and it should be addressed by them, not only by them, but by the citizens. If there is a citizen that is in need of help, that cannot afford to clean up their property, somehow, some way, whether it's a Cedar County, find ways to assist them with this. That way, it ensures us having a better and more beautiful community. As a whole, Polk County is a great place to live. I feel that everyone needs to work together to help improve the county, as well as the cities.
Thank you. Mr. Garrett, you'll answer this question first. If elected, what support would you give to the Silver Comet and Penhogy Trails?
Well, I'd give whatever support I could. From what I understand, there's a lot of people that rely on these trails. They don't have property of their own to walk, and so it's something that's very important to them. And from my understanding from the people I've talked to recently, the trails aren't being maintained properly, so I think something needs to be done, and it needs to be done relatively quickly. And, you know, if there's any type of grants that we can get in order to take some of the responsibility out of citizens of Polk County, we should look into that. Thank you.
Mr. Pascal.
I do support the trails. I enjoy being able to get out and walk and ride on them when I have time allotted. This being said, just as Mr. Garrett just referred to, there are grants that are out there available to the county to help maintain and keep the trails, to keep the trails maintained. I feel that the county should pursue some of these grants that are out there so that the money is not pulled away from the county budget, let alone the taxpayers of this county.
Thank you. Mr. Pascal, you'll answer this question first.
I didn't get a chance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Very sorry. Unintentional.
Thank you, Dan. I was on the Rockmark City Council when the Silver Comet Trail was first proposed and approved, about in 2000, at a due timeframe. At that time, Polk County would not commit any support for the trail, even to pay for the likes of the Russian Mountain Tunnel. The Rockmark City Manager and Council picked up that responsibility, as well as maintaining the trail for the project to proceed. I supported those efforts then, and I continue to support those now as county commissioner. The county maintains our portion of the trail and trailhead areas. It's a very difficult process. There's a lot of dead trees, bolling limbs, and it takes a very active crew to maintain the thirty miles of trail across this county. We are proud to fund and sponsor along with several nonprofit partners to build and now maintain the Penhogy Trailhead on K Spring Road. I actively engage with others with an interest in developing facilities such as mountain bike parks and RV resorts among these trails, foster further use. I strongly support and will continue to encourage our focus on these valuable assets. Thank you.
Amazed, that's the first time I've done that tonight with all these questions. All right, here we go. Mr. Pascal, you'll answer this one first. What are your thoughts on reentry services that ensure individuals experiencing incarceration get services to reduce recidivism?
Well, after Tuesday night, and having this same question, I wasn't really aware of the program that has just been recently introduced into the county through the Sheriff's Department. I do support this program that has been introduced. I understand that the program aims to help with the challenge faced by the individuals who are being released back into society and needing the help, by all means, whether it's through state or federal grant funding. I believe that the county should go after this to help these individuals trying to return back into society.
Mr. Carter.
Oh, I fully support these services, and I did in my vote to fund and staff the position. Approximately eighteen months ago, I shared with jail administrator approached commission asking for staffing and funding for reentry services program. Based on that presentation and anticipated long-term benefits of the program, we unanimously approved and funded this activity this past fiscal year. Lydia Goodson, our Polk County Offensive Services Coordinator, is now actively managing this program under the direction of jail administrator Rachel Addicks. We are already hearing many positive aspects of the program. I look forward to the accomplishments of the effort and being able to report its successes in the future. If you desire to learn more about this valuable asset, please reach out to Lydia or Rachel at the county jail.
Mr. Garrett.
I've been invited to participate in this reentry simulation at Camp Anioque, and I plan on attending. I think it's very important, and I also think that we should could look into getting some grants from the Second Chance Act and encourage our local organizations to use these funds for programs such as job training, addiction services, and housing to combat problems ex offenders face when reentering society. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Carter, you'll answer this question first. Do you think that special considerations should be given to Polk County businesses when purchasing or contracting services?
Yes, and it already is, within a reasonable percentage of total bids and ensuring they can deliver the service or product at hand. State law allows some leeway here, and I believe we exercise that as much as legally possible. However, there are many instances in large projects that are tied to state and federal funds where a local provider may not be able to meet those guidelines. We really have to look at all aspects of procurement regulations when making those decisions, but at the end of the day, I believe we should always support our local business partners above all else. Thank you.
Mr. Garrett.
Well, with me being the type of person I am, I'm OCD about things, I want them done the very best they can be done. And not always are you going to find your best next door. So that being said, if they happen to be here, yes, we'll give them the job, but if they're a town over or a county over, I say we get the best we can so that when the work is done, we don't have to revisit it. That way, we're saving taxpayer dollars.
Mr. Pascal.
Yes, I do. I believe that a big factor goes out, and it comes down to two local companies or one that's out of state versus being in state, as an example. Local companies should get the jobs. That way, it helps to support, continue to support our revenue and tax bases coming into the county.
And for our final question of the night, Mr. Garrett, you'll answer this one first. How do you plan to combat turnover for county employees?
All right, number one, we need to make sure that they have comparable salaries to neighboring counties. For one, just make sure that they're treated fairly on their job. I'm so sorry, I didn't read over this too well. My line is just make sure that they know that they're valued, and if you have any workers that are exceptional, make sure that they get bonuses for that exceptional work. If you have somebody that's a slacker, and I've seen this a lot of cases, they're allowed to just do as they please, and then the other people feel unappreciated. So I think you need to get rid of those that aren't doing their job and show the ones that aren't doing their job how much you appreciate them. Thank you.
Mr. Pascal.
Question should be, what's the vision of the county at this time? It's been elaborated already. It's not only Polk County issue, but it's a nationwide issue. Me being a small business owner, I faced this myself. That being said, I feel that, you know, as an elected official, we should do everything that we can to support the backbone of the county, being our employees. Want the employees to believe that they matter and that the job they are doing is beneficial to the citizens. And as always, money is at the top of the list. Thus being said, doing incentive programs to reward them, whether it's by promotion or their labors of their hard work, which leads to a better work environment. Most of all, giving the employees the tools and resources they need to complete the jobs and tasks that they are given.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
Well, there's no doubt that in any service organization, your employee is your primary asset, your most valued asset, and is the asset you've got to ensure keeps performing at its highest level. But the employee landscape is much different today than it was twenty years ago. More young people are willing to job hop, resume their field, or simply seeking new adventure. I don't currently believe our turnover statistics deviate significantly from the norm, especially for public agencies our size. We have those numbers to state that. That said, the county has taken multiple steps to aid in both employee recruitment and retention. We implemented a call incident institute and conducted an overall evaluation of our job positions, tasks, and responsibilities, and aligned with correct job descriptions. Positions within aligned within standard grades, with each grade having built-in step wage increases, normally biannually. This was a new concept in, in higher local government as it's not just the cost of living, there's step raises in every position within the county now. Implementation of the position and salary plan included upward wage adjustments for most personnel. Since that implementation, we've provided annual wage increase across the board, a COLA, with a net, net increase of over thirteen percent in the last three fiscal years. These increases have been applied to base rates and all steps within the salary plan as well. Approved multiple reevaluation, we approved multiple reevaluations to increase several, the grades of several requested positions, as well as increased entry levels for many hard-to-find skilled physicians. We've absorbed multiple years of health insurance increases, not passing on the same to the employees. We've also provided an insurance rebate back to the employee to offset premium costs. We did that in one year last year. We sought and recruited professional leadership in several positions, assistant county manager, HR director, budget works director, and fire chief, bringing years of experience in employment management into our county operations. We modified our retirement plan to adopt an eighty-twenty rule for retirement eligibility. We modified that retirement plan to focus on four-on-three investments, offering greater flexibility to newly hired employees and a desire of the younger generation. And finally, we've approved an optional annual stipend for all employees, which boosts their annual earnings typically at the end of the year. We've done these things already. We have the statistics and numbers, and I'm proud to say that, that we have a great set of employees today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks to all of our candidates participating tonight. Again, these are your county commission candidates for District Three, Ray Carter, John Pascal, and Butch Garrett, and we are grateful that you spent your time tonight answering the questions. And thank you all for joining us. Thank you to the Pope County Chamber of Commerce for hosting the event, also to the Rockmark Theater for hosting us tonight, and the Cedar Town Performing Arts Center for the event on Tuesday night. A reminder that the election is on May twenty-first, and we have information cards in the lobby if you'd like to pick those up on your way out. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. Have a wonderful evening.
This wraps up the video coverage from the Pope County Chamber of Commerce candidate forums held on Tuesday evening, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, at the Cedar Town Performing Arts Center, and in this session on Thursday evening, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, at the Rockmark Theater. The full series of videos from both nights are available, like this one, for you for public consumption on polktoday.com at any time. Don't forget that Monday, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, is opening day for early voting in Cedar Town and Rockmark. You can find out more details on polktoday.com about where to go to vote and what you'll need to take part in the May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four primary election, early or on voting day. You can also find more video like this and other locally focused Pope County news coverage for monthly or greater subscribers, such as meetings like this, on polktoday.com. Look for a link in the description for more information. I'm Kevin, the editor. Thanks for tuning into this coverage, and once more, don't forget to vote.